Good evening to everyone. August the 8th, City of Mount Vernon council meeting. We're obviously all wearing masks, but we'll try to do the best we can in terms of speaking up. All that good stuff, so bear with us. The only change I'm aware of on the agenda that we have in front of us is resolution item number four. Out of movie tables and so are nine twenty-one for that council meeting. Otherwise, the agenda we have in front of us is...
I'll make a motion to approve that, but agenda would that one change?
Can I ask, how come, how come?
The consultants couldn't be here.
Second?
The consultants couldn't be here.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes. The derecho kicked everything back two weeks, so. I wanted to make sure they could answer your questions.
I'll second.
Tom and Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, communications. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? Council, please do it now.
Communications time?
Please, Joe. Three.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Jensen. I'm the director of Main Street and Marketing for Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group. And during COVID and now derecho, you can see that the small businesses on Main Street are hurting. We're still open, and where our committees are working to try to come up with some out of the box ideas to help drive traffic. And one of them, I'm going to talk to you a little later in the meeting, but know that we are coming up with an idea for Magical Night this year, too, that we'll be back to talk to you about. But I just want to let you know we're still alive and we're working, and we appreciate any kind of support you can give to small businesses in Mount Vernon and Lisbon. That is it, thank you.
Everybody else? Move on. Second Street, southeast parking issues. I don't see those independents for us.
No, they requested to be on the meeting prior to derecho. So I'll reach back after them and see if they still want to come to another meeting.
All right, we will move on. Anybody else? Move on to the consent agenda. Approval of council minutes from our August seventeen council meeting as well as approval of liquor license for Mount Vernon Municipal Code.
I'll second.
Steph and Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? All right, next item is public hearing. I will need a motion to obtain item one.
Second, Deb.
Deb and Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item one. Public hearing for the amendment to chapter one thirty-five, street use and maintenance of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. Open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to address this item with the council? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to ordinance eight dash seventeen dash twenty twenty A, amendment chapter one thirty-five, street use and maintenance of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code.
So this would add the paragraph in which you would eliminate parking of any motor truck, trailer, semi-trailer, truck tractor, motor home which exceeds eighty-four inches in width and twenty feet in length from the streets, with the exception of sixty for thirty-minute periods as stopovers. So this came out of a complaint that was presented to the city council, and from there, this is language similar to what the city of Cedar Rapids has in their code. So staff hasn't done much to change that other than the location of where it would be in our code. We don't have a huge problem with large vehicles parked on the streets, but we do have a small handful, and we really don't have anything outside of this to kind of take that task, I guess, so.
My impression of it is that it's repeat offenders. It's just a couple of folks that are, you know. And offenders is even because there's nothing on the board right now, but you know.
Yeah, it's a couple of situations.
I did have a couple of questions, just real quick. Is there any thinking or rationale behind having sixty minutes during the day and thirty at night?
Other than typically lunch in the middle of the day, and they're more visible in the daytime than they are at night, unless they're running. If they have their running lights on, then they're fairly visible. If they don't, we just have extremely narrow streets. One individual I know, that vehicle is flat. Happens to be parked under a street light most of the time, but if we're not, it would blend in with the street light.
So here to approve this, what would be the method of communication?
So my suggestion would be to let this run its course, go through the three readings, allow us to get out into paper and see what tends to happen. Chief and I, like I said, I know what to you, but I think if you were to move forward with the first reading, we'd probably reach out to you and say, hey, this is moving forward. But I think giving it the course of the six-week period would be prudent, especially when it's complaint-based, and when any ordinance is initiated that way.
Has anybody discussed this with the guy doing it that parks the strip?
Not since this ordinance has come forward, but the individual that prompted has been talked to in the past, and it gets better for a little while and then kind of reverts back. Depends on the street, too. You know, sometimes it's vehicles parked on Fifth Avenue. Last school wasn't in session, it wasn't a huge deal. It was a huge deal during the derecho cleanup. Like it's parked on Third Street, Third Street. It's pretty narrow. So, yeah, I mean, our expectation is we would talk to those individuals and just let them know what's going on. But, yeah, they're not, they're unaware of it, I guess. Probably unaware of the actual ordinance. But they haven't talked to them in the past.
And do the dimensions of the vehicle, are those just because that would be big, or?
Yeah, so larger than normal, larger than the normal.
So it rules out just your normal vans and that type of stuff? That's the intention I thought.
Any other questions, council? Or is your table voting?
I move approval of ordinance eight dash seventeen dash twenty twenty A, amending chapter one thirty-five for the street use and maintenance of the City of Mount Vernon Municipal Code.
I second.
Scott, Steph, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Rod Bush?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
All right. Next item is public hearing for the amendment to chapter fifteen, Mayor of Mount Vernon Municipal Code. Open a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to, it says F three, but I assume that's F two. Amending chapter fifteen, Mayor of Mount Vernon Municipal Code. Chris?
So as we talked recently about the mask mandate during the resolution, one of the conversation pieces was differences between, say, the mayor of Cedar Rapids or the mayor of Iowa City in acting proclamation by proclamation to the emergency declaration. And one of the things that came out of that was our ordinance, as it relates to the mayor, didn't have that specified language in there. And it's not just necessarily about the mask mandate, but it could be about a number of things during an emergency declaration. That until 2020, most people didn't give a ton of thought to, and after 2020, everybody is kind of remaining. So regardless of the mask issue, this is something that needs to be for in the time of an emergency to give mayor the specified duties that could be upheld by the court law.
The only question, the two things or thoughts that I had. There isn't any timeframe in here. There's no provision for undoing it. And, you know, not that I think Jamie is under power, but, you know, there's nothing in here that says he couldn't tomorrow say, I'm declaring disaster. And there's nothing for any of us to do anything about it until he decides to undeclare that.
So kind of. So there is state law that discusses declarations of disaster when they can be issued.
Okay, so there's, it's got to be A, B, or C, or there's guidelines.
Correct. So it's got to be related to a public health emergency, basically. Now, the timeframe for a normal proclamation, like a derecho event, is typically a month to six weeks. COVID has gone on since March. So yes, now, one of the things that you did see in the City of Muscatine is the checks and balances, I guess you would say, is if there was an additional proclamation outside the emergency, say imposition of curfew. There is ways that the council can prevent funding to go towards that. So there is a checks and balances, it's intricate, but it does exist. You would have the ability as a full council to take some actions if you need to. But with that being said, by definition, the emergency proclamation is there so that you do not physically have to be able to meet every time a decision is.
Absolutely, and I agree with that part. I guess my only concern was if, I mean, if you have a mayor who is on one side of an issue and you've got a council who's on another, there are scenarios of veto, as an example, where via a supermajority, the council can overturn that.
So, yeah, like I said, Muscatine is probably the best example I have where the council stepping in and taking action to prevent the mayor from fully enacting or moving forward with something like that.
And just for clarity, does it have to be a public health emergency? Or could it be a different kind of emergency where this?
Definition, under state law, there is a section that deals specifically with issuing a proclamation of emergency, so.
It does read time of emergency or public.
Well, that's, I just, you had stated just a second ago, public health emergency.
Correct, and it doesn't have to be a health emergency. So for me, for instance, because the derecho event is so new, had we had to implement a curfew, for instance, that night to keep people off of the streets with downed power lines and so forth, we probably could have tried it. But if we would have enforced it, there was question as to whether or not Jamie would have had that authority at that time.
Are there any dependencies in terms of the potential mask ordinance with this? Because I know that, you know, you brought it up when the attorney read that. We discovered that we needed to have both of these in place, and I just wanted to see if there is a dependency in some way that...
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm comfortable enough with what's included here, what's not included here, and with authorizing the mayor's position to have that authority and so on. And I don't want to curtail or slow up any response when there is a disaster and so on. So I would make a motion to approve the first reading, I believe, of ordinance nine dash eight dash twenty twenty B A, sorry.
I'll second that.
Tom and Deb, any other comments? Roll call, please.
West?
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Number two says the City of Iowa City. I have that in my notes.
I would love the attorney to know.
Good catch. I don't know that we would let Iowa City make an ordinance. It's not a precedent we want to set. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Good catch.
Maybe there are two attorneys, too.
Roll call, please.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Rod Bush?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
All right. Back to public hearing, public hearing for the adoption of chapter forty-nine, mandating face covering for a public health emergency from operating municipal code. Open the public hearing for this item. Anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Yes, please come forward. Name and address, please.
Sage Parker, eight ten Common Circle Southwest, number five one five. So I think we need to be very, very clear that in the past several days, the population of this town has increased by eight hundred and seventy-five. And that as a public health emergency, it's not just about the actions of individuals. It is about the actions of every single person in this town, that the actions of everyone here is going to affect everyone else. If you look at the projections that a lot of scientists are putting out, if you look at the projections of case numbers, of death numbers, this pandemic is likely just beginning. Things are not bad in the past, they're going to get bad in the future. And the council and the city needs to act in the strongest way possible. Yes, the state might try and has tried to curtail this city's authority, but that does not change the fact that we need to act to protect the people in this town. There are several people here who don't have the ability to survive, many people. And the students on campus, they don't get that. They are at a developmental stage where they do not understand long-term consequences of actions. And if you look at what has happened to the University of Iowa, if you have looked at, you know, what has happened to other colleges around Iowa and around the country, people my age are not capable of understanding a public health emergency the way that a twenty-six-year-old, or a thirty-two-year-old, or a forty-year-old is able to. They have been isolated for months and months and months and have desperately want social contact. And on campus, on Saturday night, dozens of groups of two to five people could be seen out along campus on the grass about nine-thirty PM. And about, I would estimate about a third of them were not wearing masks, maybe one to three feet in proximity of each other. I didn't recognize any of these students, so my assumption was that they were all freshmen. That may or may not be true. Obviously, you know, I know a lot of people in my class year, which is the senior year, and might not know a whole lot of people who are sophomores. Students on campus have been protesting the college's response. And I think a lot of people might not really get why the students are protesting. They're not protesting because they want, at least right now, the protests that people have been talking about, the NSO walkout, those protests were not because they wanted the college to enforce stricter guidelines. They were asking the college to enforce the guidelines that they had already put in place and were failing to enforce. And they were asking the college to allow students who had a symptomatic roommate to not go to class. And I think it is clear that if we are in a position where students need to protest in order to not go to class when their roommate is coughing, we have a really big problem with the college's response. And the only level, the only level that can do something now is at this level, the city and the county, because the college has failed. And maybe everything's going to turn out all right. Maybe, maybe there's just enough, you know, negative cases. There's a few students on campus with this. Maybe a lot of the students got tested before they came to campus. Maybe things are going to go all right, but maybe they won't. And if they don't go all right, there are a lot of lives that are being put at stake. People who need to get groceries, who don't have any other options. This is a public health emergency, and I do not believe that we can trust the college to act in the best interests of the community. They will act in the best interest of the college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to ordinance nine dash eight dash twenty twenty B, adopting chapter forty-nine, mandating face coverings for a public health emergency of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code.
So what you have is an ordinance that was produced by the city attorney based on ordinance out of the City of Dubuque. There are six questions that the attorney has outlined within the ordinance that I would ask council or should be a staff answer. So I would ask you to discuss answers to those six questions. I'd be happy to run through each of those as far as a staff perspective. But the only concern, and Mr. Parker brings up a good point, the only concern that I have is the one that I voiced from the very beginning in that situation, is the expectation, once this is adopted, that we are going to go around and spend a significant amount of time finding people for the lack of mask. I have not had a discussion since Cornell students have come back on campus. But we made it very clear to Cornell and the school district when they host their events that they were to enforce the mask mandate. And I have concerns even with the fine, if the expectation is for people to call up the non-emergency line and say, people are not wearing masks. We expect people to come up here and levy fines, because most of the cities end up and stick to the federal, we've talked to quite a few of them, have used it as an education tool and not a fine. So I'm looking at expectations for both sides. Somebody's going to be disappointed if we do not levy a fine or if we do levy a fine, one or the other. I'm not necessarily concerned about the challenges from a legal standpoint. There's enough opinions out there as it relates to the Attorney General, the Assistant Attorney General opinion as it relates to whether or not cities can move forward with a mandate like that. So that I can handle, like I said. The fines are not completely significant, they're ten and fifteen dollars.
I would like to say this. Those fines of the ten and fifteen dollars, the Dubuque policy is first offense, ten dollars, second offense, fifteen, I believe. In Iowa City, it's much different. And I got input from talking to their city attorney that you're right, they use it as educational, and it's only in very egregious instances if they would need to bring in law enforcement. However, they have attached a simple misdemeanor fine to it at a rate of four hundred and fifty dollars, which I think is very steep. I don't think ten dollars is enough for people to take seriously. In my mind, if we were to attach a fine, and after talking to some people in the community to feel like, to feel out what would be enough, a hundred dollars feels fair to me. But I just want you to know, Iowa City does have a very steep fine attached to it. And the other part about this, that I think is very important, and I would hope that it would play into some of the things that Sage was talking about, is the value of this as a deterrent to prevent people from, you know, to take it more seriously.
So two things. Number one, Iowa City's fines haven't been court tested yet. So that's my, that's my...
None of them have.
Yeah, that's my concern is, is there's a question in light of a non-related court case today with the schools, I'm a little bit more concerned about cities versus state when it comes to proving this. So I would agree with you there. They do have a large fine associated with, potentially with egregious violators. But the other issue I have with that is when we say egregious, what is, I don't want to speak for Doug or the police department, but now you're asking the department to determine what is an egregious act versus a simple violation. And that gets a little tricky.
Aren't they asked to do that on a regular basis in the process of what they're doing?
Not necessarily. They have the ability, they have the ability to issue warnings.
I mean, if we liken this to a speeding ticket, Doug, for ten miles over, just not to put you on the spot, but a minute, ten miles over the speed limit, what's the ticket for that on?
Car cost and everything else, probably around a hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay. So, but, and every day, we ask our officers to either issue those or issue a warning. And every day, they do one of those two things fairly often. And I think a lot of it comes down to how familiar they are with the person, what the attitude and behavior is. I mean, there's, you know, and we ask our guys to do that on a daily basis. So, I mean, I don't see a whole lot of difference between this and that, frankly. I mean, and, you know, I think if we go the education route, egregious could be considered coming back three times to the same folks, saying, this is the same thing we talked about three days ago. You're clearly not getting it by us just talking to you, so here's a hundred bucks, here's a hundred and thirty bucks. I would be willing to bet that if Doug pulled me over three times in the course of ten days and gave me a warning the first two times, I'm probably not getting a warning the third time, because clearly, I'm not getting a message that speeding isn't a great idea. So, and I'm not saying that they're equal, you know, A equals B, but they're, I think you could make a pretty easy case that we ask our guys to use judgment on a pretty regular basis. And thus far, I think overall, have been very happy with how that has been.
Doug, how's it been so far in terms of the mask mandate?
We had a couple, the initial resolution that was put out, we had a confrontation at the grocery store where a subject was confronted by staff of the grocery store to put on a mask, asked to put on a mask. Subject refused, kind of created a scene, began being disruptive and defamatory towards staff, resulting in they called the police for, because they were asked to leave the property, they wouldn't have. Ended up, like we talked about previously, too, we handled that as a trespass issue, which is exactly what happened. Very confrontational with law enforcement, even in that situation as well. The subject is not from here, not a local Mount Vernon person. Other than that, there's been, you know, a few complaints, but we haven't seen a significant issue. We haven't seen huge gatherings or anything like that around since we've been dealing with, obviously, the bars. obviously the bar scene and stuff like that. We had a complaint over the weekend of one of the bars serving, you know, having a large group of people in there, not socially distancing, we did a check and they were probably less than half their capacity or right around half their capacity and a few smaller groups of people. So, you know, again, not, nothing significant from that standpoint.
And in both of those instances, when you said the proprietor or the employee of Gary's College, and was that the same situation at the bar or was that a patron?
No, the bar was a citizen complaint.
Is there a reason that they went off of the city of Dubuque's ordinance as opposed to like Cedar Rapids that has a simple misdemeanor more akin to a speeding ticket?
The city of Cedar Rapids is a mayoral proclamation.
Okay, yeah, I'm misspeaking, I think Iowa City.
Iowa City is the same.
Okay. Oh, okay, so that isn't an actual ordinance?
No. So what both, so what happened in Iowa City is Johnson's, Johnson County Health Department.
Gave them a cover for it.
Correct. So the county itself has, and I believe Lynn County has at least expressed an interest in doing something similar. I don't know if they've accomplished that yet, but, um, yes, what you have seen, so I believe Des Moines was a mayoral proclamation, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids. Dubuque is an actual ordinance.
Dubuque's county ordinance just failed as well. They didn't pass the county mandate from there, so they're trying to do a county mandate.
Say that again, Doug, the city is, but the county is not?
City is, Dubuque County was trying to do a countywide mandate as well and that failed, I believe. I don't know if that was today or.
Whatever their version of the supervisor level.
Two to one is.
Okay.
I would really like to say, I understand all the stores and the commercial buildings and all that. I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem is, is somebody trying to have a conversation, two, three, four people in a group, and then you go into that and you try to fine them for that. Those four, three or two or people, they have, they're responsible for themselves, they're not in a building, they're not jeopardizing other people. I have a problem with somebody criminalizing people actually talking with one another. And like I said, they're not jeopardizing anybody else but themselves. And if they got a problem, they can step back. So I, if you wanna force it in, in buildings, fine, but I have a problem with outdoors talking and that. That's, you're taking a law-abiding citizen and telling them they're criminal because you could be sick. It's like saying, I think you got a gun, you got a gun, so I'm gonna go up and pursue you because I think you got a gun. No, you can't do that. That's, that's constitutionally wrong and that's the same thing you're doing here. Oh, you're sick. No, I'm not, I'm not sick. Prove it. So you can't do that. I just, I have a problem with that. So, and another thing we need to look at too, I mean, this was in the Cedar Rapids paper on Sunday. And you gotta look at this, it says depression has surged amid, amid pandemic. So you got depression rising, you got suicide rioting, alcoholism, drugs. People are social, they, they need social contact. And what we're doing is we're creating another pandemic by dealing with just health, we're letting everything else go. And pretty soon we're gonna have to deal with that. So I have a problem with that and that tunnel vision is gonna be a problem. So let's deal with the other things too and let's, let's do it to a point, but let's not get crazy and start fining people a hundred bucks or fifty bucks or whatever, it's ridiculous. Now, if they get really hostile or anything, yeah, there's a case to it. But if they're just going about their own business, I mean, it's ridiculous. Let's, let's concentrate on everything except, instead of just health. We got mental health, we got financial health, we got everything, all these other things. You know, let's, let's, let's not be tunnel vision here.
I don't disagree with you that mental health is important and needs to be looked at and we're not telling people not to be social. In fact, in some ways, I would say, like for example, at the uptown sidewalk sales that we had, we were just talking about this earlier, a lot of people were out. And I think part of the reason that people went out is because they felt safe in doing so because they knew other people were gonna be there wearing masks. And so again, this issue is not just about me and myself, it's about me wearing a mask to protect other people. And I guess I, I appreciate the points that you're making and you are absolutely correct. I crave myself to be out and to be social. And I do forget to, you know, apply this because I haven't developed the habit yet. But this piece of suggested ordinance that is in front of us is very specific. It doesn't say always, it doesn't say when you're talking to your neighbor that you have to have a mask on. It says in public, if you can't stay six feet apart, that's when you should do it. Now, six feet apart, that's a long ways, right? And it also doesn't say if you're gathering, um, a, a one-on-one circumstance in your house that you have to have it on. It doesn't, it says in public, outside your residence. So just for clarity, I wanna make sure that we're reading the words on the piece of paper. It is very prescriptive when you are in an indoor public setting. The, the words here are very prescriptive and I do think as we enter into winter and we enter into school and other opportunities where there's larger groups of people interacting with each other, for me to feel good talking to all of you, I have this on because of you. I hope you do me the service of putting one on for me. I'll do my part, but I need you to do your part too. It's a two-way street here, unfortunately. To me, this is a small step that we collectively can do for each other. And it's too bad that we can't depend on people doing what is good for each other without putting some teeth in it. And if it takes a hundred bucks, I'm okay with a hundred dollars.
Crystal, let's run through these other questions.
So comment one, says anyone who has trouble breathing and oxygen therapy or ventilator. The question from the attorney is, do they need, do they say they have trouble breathing or do they need some kind of documentation to avoid the ticket? So this, um, kinda goes along with number four. Doug can probably answer this better than I can, but I don't know how many, who carry that kind of documentation.
Yeah, I don't think I've done a half that we've.
So I will tell you, we have, we've had an incident of an individual that was aware of our current resolution and did frequent a business in town and basically said, I have a health condition.
Cause at some point this becomes ADA.
So they don't have a health condition, but that was what was being told. So, um, that is a question that we can have the existing language in there. I think what the attorney is asking is, do you want more language in there as it relates to how they're trying to prove it? I don't know how we do that.
I think that could be handled at a time of, you know, when the, um, when our police force is talking to them, if, again, if it's a situation that's egregious, the first step in my expectation would be a warning, right? This is a, as Doug said, this is a learning process for all of us. None of us are perfect. We are all, we have to get into new habits that we haven't had ever. And so I think it would be fair for them to say, hey, we're giving you a warning, this is why you need to have it on. I suggest that, um, you know, you, you get the documentation and have it with you just in case this comes up again. You know, it gives them the opportunity to have it available. Not at that moment in time, but in case something were to come up in the future.
Do I have a feasible to, I mean, could you kinda like say I suggest you do this?
To a certain degree. And so that's been, this is much tied into many of the conversations I've had with the area agencies and past several enforcement aspects in their own manners. The concerns I have is how sound of a principle are we pushing? And so kinda what Chris was kinda going back to before, is we make this ordinance and make this enforceable, at what level are we gonna be successful in court? Because not everybody we deal with is going to be as simple as, hey, can I have your name so I can get a warning for a mask? Some of them will refuse to give us their name. How far do you want that to go? And then how do we document that? And how do we keep all of that information going as well? How far do you want that confrontation to go? That's the hard part. And it's a common theme that I've heard from other law enforcement in this exact issue, especially in today's world that we're operating in. We're all treating it as an educational aspect and, and they're giving warnings, handing out masks. Every one of our squad cars has a box of masks in it for us to hand out. So that's my concerns and just, you know, cautiously thought from your perspective coming back. That's what the officers will be confronting and dealing with. If everybody's cooperative, it's very easy to track. Okay, well, we talked to Scott three different times for not wearing it, or whoever. And that's easy to do if everybody wants to comply and give us their information, cooperate with the process and go through from there. If one person doesn't, then we, then we have problems.
What happens now if, if I'm walking down the street and you have reasonable cause to stop and chat with me and ask for my ID?
If I believe you've committed a crime-
Right.
-that is based on Iowa law or, you know, something that is established. And like I said, that's, that's the big unknown of this one, is because it's not known what level of enforcement the attorney general, who's, who has the authority?
Which is true of every single law that's ever been written the first time around.
Right.
So, I mean-
But the ones that we're enforcing on the state level-
Right, I know.
-have gone through the court process.
Right, so what happens if, if you stop me for something that has gone through the legal process and you've got strong bases and I refuse to give you my ID?
If we have, if, like I said, if there's cause for that and you refuse to cooperate and there's a crime that we can identify, then it would be interference, it would be another offense.
Right, so it turns into something else, just like at Gary's, it's a trespass.
Correct.
Right, so, I mean, I think I, and I'm not trying to diminish your point. I know we're, we're asking you guys and the, the political reality of what we're talking about here makes it a hot potato that nobody wants. I totally get that, okay? I'm not trying to diminish that by any means, but I, I think again, I would go back to what I said earlier, that, that the, you know, we hire and train and do both of those things, I think, quite well and have an excellent force. And, and we, each day we ask them to make those judgment calls. Now, I, I get your point of asking, how far do you want us to push this? Do we, do we take them down, you know, uptown, I guess, you know, but so, um, and I don't, you know, collectively, we gotta come up with that, but.
Well, I think the answer to your question is we're going to find out real quick if this is legal. And so that's number one. Number two, if you make a semi-valid point, but not all, because you can't compare what is going on here to other initial laws that were put on the books. Typically, they're vetted. Now you have two governing agencies stating that one believes we can do this and the other believes that we can't. That's not usually how we-
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not trying to say that this is typical kind of scenario.
The reason that I, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not pushing back. I want you to understand that there is a potential cost here to the city, A, to fight this and B, to the enforcement by our officers. And I am, my concern is just what Doug had said or stated, how far do you want us to escalate this? Because there is a difference with the law that you're asking us to put on the books here versus other laws that have been tried through and tested throughout the process. And they're usually backed by another governing agency, I mean, typically. Or some offshoot of a court case to do that. So again, going back to what Doug was stating, if you want them to provide proof, then we need to go back and tell the attorney that and they need to add language to this beyond what you see. Because you're going to have to give the officers, what type of proof are we asking for? When we talk about medical, legal or behavioral health, for instance, if somebody says, I have one of those, what type of excuse are we going to allow them to get in the future? And so
I know.
I mean, I'm trying to do my best, and like I said, I want to temper reality here with, I, you know, twenty years of experience on how this is going to unfold.
I hear you, but I also have lots of years of experience in this community and I feel a lot of responsibility for, you know, we've got an additional twenty percent of the population that's been added to it with Cornell here. I also know, and we all know in this room, what happened when children died in this community. And I take it very seriously that I feel a sense that I need to protect some people. And here's the thing, how long, you said we'll find out, we'll find out real quick if it goes to court. Right now, with the way the courts are right now, how long would something take to pass through the courts? That's my first question. Second question is, how many more cases are there in Lynn County in that timeframe at today's rate? Okay, maybe three, four months, six months to go through court?
So that's a whole lot of hypotheticals, but, so there's a couple of things. When it goes through court, just what happens today is they can ask for an immediate injunction, injunctive relief, like this is what happened today. And a judge can rule on that fairly quick. I can't answer your question as far as how quickly this will happen. And I'm not downplaying that conversation at all. My, my concern is, is I will tell you that if it is struck down, then every law relating to mask resolutions, mandates, all of that gets struck down. So, you know, when Doug asks how far we wanna push it, again, if we end up losing, you, you go, the few steps that you've taken forward, all the way.
So are we having this conversation and we're being asked not to protect ninety-five percent of our population because there might be five people or whatever that would be a problem? I mean, that's, that's the, that's where I sit.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not debating the ordinance itself stuff any at all. That's not what I'm doing here. I'm making sure that all of you make the, the decision with all of the facts in front of you. You, you're asking-
And I appreciate that.
You ask my opinion and I'm giving it.
Right.
So I'm not on the merits of, of this ordinance. That's not my, my decision at all to make. My, my job for you is to tell you, here are the pitfalls to this thing and to make sure that you understand where this goes. Typically, yes, if you, if you increase the fines, you increase the chance of outside influences coming here to be the issue.
And I would echo exactly that as well. I mean, it's, and that's where I kinda come back from, from the law enforcement perspective as well. When I talk about how solid the foundation is that we're standing on, how solid is the foundation that the officers are gonna go out and make that contact with? In other words, how much legal backing are they going to have if they get into that situation and they have to make an arrest that's based off refusal to comply, refusal to do anything? And then the mask ordinance falls apart and then we've made an arrest related to that? Where do we stand civilly? Where do we stand in violation of somebody's rights from that perspective because we made an arrest from there? So again-
So you're talking about arrests, but we're talking about simple misdemeanor with a ticket. Explain to me the difference. Are we talking about escalation?
If somebody refuses to fine, to, to accept the ticket, then they can get, they're arrested because they're refusing to go to court and refusing to do something.
Right, but that's after a period of time, right? When after-
No, it would be right then and there.
Okay.
So just like a speeding ticket. So just like a speeding ticket, if I pull you over for speeding and you say, I think that law is junk, I'm not signing it. Then well, you have to step out and you're under arrest and you go to jail from that perspective. So that's my point.
Okay.
And again, kind of going to what Chris alluded to earlier. I want you to understand exactly what the officers will be having to deal with and they'll have to face from that situation. And then we can kind of take this back and hopefully our city attorney can define exactly what kind of legal grounds we're going to be on.
So, so is the, the questions that are in here, the two that go together, which basically say, give me proof? Or what are we asking for, for proof? If we don't go any further than just having the wording in there and not asking for proof of those things in any way, shape, or form?
And the person doesn't have to self-incriminate themselves either.
Yeah.
Right.
So they don't have to prove anything to me at that point. It's my job to prove up the offense.
Yeah. So does that mean, Doug, that you could not ask?
I can ask.
But they don't have to say?
Correct.
And if they don't, you can't take it anywhere. If you ask and I say, I don't want to show you. That's the other conversation about you.
Unless I've got some other, I mean, that's the difficulty in making cases.
I mean, obviously, somebody's not a ventilator, you would be able to physically see that. If somebody was requiring an oxygen tank to breathe, you would be able to see that.
The behavioral health, for instance, is one of the more difficult, obviously, to-
Yeah, but I don't know before.
Well, I mean, I'm no attorney or doctor or behavioral health professional, but I know enough that in number four, I can't, none of us can make somebody show a doctor's note really. You know, I mean, per hip. I would imagine attorney-client privilege covers legal and a behavioral health professional. I mean, you're back to doctor patient at that point too.
I guess the point that I'm making with the way that this is worded and it's already happened is the individuals that you're, that we are discussing as being the potential violators simply need to figure out what these exemptions are and they will be exempt from a fine. If, for instance, like I said, if Doug were to approach somebody and say, you know, I'm under, I'm under, you know, a licensed professional health recommendation not to wear a mask, that's it.
Could be anxiety.
So-
Yeah. And I'm okay, I'm okay with the verdict that it is.
And I think Doug brought up a good point, you know, stuff back to what you mentioned. I don't think a lot of our challenges will be with, with them in Mount Vernon locally. It'll be those individuals outside of Mount Vernon that sees it this past and they want to come and screw up.
Well, it's, I mean, we've been talking theoretical, but Iowa City has had a very similar ordinance for how long? Couple of weeks, three weeks, month?
It's been well over a month now.
And both of you have talked, at least as far as I know, with folks deep into it. What has been their experience? Have they had outside folks?
Iowa City's position is they're, the police are the last resort. They're using every other aspect and trying to leave the police out of it for any enforcement aspect. They are, if it's a liquor license establishment that is in violation, the city council would go after the liquor license. If there are any permits, so if you're a restaurant and you have a permit to dine outside and the establishment is not following social distancing guidelines or the county guidelines, they're going after that. They're adamantly trying to not have police involved.
And I don't, I mean, I would be entirely in favor of that. I don't want you guys to be the first line of this. That's not my intention.
That was never my intention. And that's why I feel like this has gone a little far that way. I mean, I know we need to talk about those things.
So taking that approach, what has Iowa City's police forces experienced? At least in your conversation.
They respond to complaints, they, again, like we're doing hand-to-mass, out and even at that, they're walking away, giving a warning from there. But you also have to keep in mind too, that Iowa City has a much bigger staff than what Mount Vernon has. They have different divisions of each one of those entities to be able to process through that. So what you're, what you're going to be looking at here is a much smaller scale from that standpoint. And so a lot of it defaults back to Chris and I and our department and staff members and stuff like that too.
It's where the football happens, right?
So it is unclear to me what you just brought up about the enforceability. So in this, in this suggested wording, it's under 49.05, right? So nowhere in here does it say that we would pursue other means of enforceability. It doesn't say the thing about going after the liquor license or going after the down the outdoor.
I don't think Iowa City actually says that. I think that's just department there.
So here's the-
No, which is about-
Slight difference though, Iowa City has a number of business-related licenses that we do not. So they have a little bit more enforcement. So liquor license challenge, for instance, because Johnson County Public Health is involved, restaurants, things like that. We don't have any separate licenses for any of those businesses. You vote individually on a recommendation on a liquor license that is actually issued through the state law. So, and then-
But we, I mean, and we routinely run stamp laws, but we don't have to.
No, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to not get their liquor license, but-
Right. But we do have the ability to, I know, or maybe my memory doesn't serve me correctly, but, you know, the sale of cigarettes. You know, I mean, a cigarette is another license. And I know of at least one place in town that, you know, they were doing what they shouldn't be doing and got their cigarette license from that summer day. So, I mean, there are, I'm not saying that there are-
True, but it didn't get, like, the only point I'm making is it didn't get pulled by the city. They got pulled by the state law.
Ah, okay.
So those enforcement actions came from the state, which aren't going to happen here. Iowa City has the outdoor dining, things like that. They actually issue permits for a lot of those businesses downtown. We don't have those. So some of those enforcement actions that Iowa City is able to take, we wouldn't have anyway. I just, like, again, my point is I want to make sure everybody is completely understanding what we will be able to do and not be able to do. And letting, you know, I don't want you to ever pass a law and feel uncomfortable about what we're going to actually be able to do with it. Because we do have people on the other side of this that do call in. And we've done some education on the other side as far as what the current resolution deems a violation and what it doesn't. And there's expectation on that side as well as, why are you not doing anything about it? So we're trying to kind of mesh that a little bit, but-
So on the question, at line number four on 49.04, also did a food establishment in the process of eating or drinking? I don't think that needs to be qualified any more than that. My, I'm thinking that they determine whether they are six feet away from another table. Obviously, while they're eating their food, they can't put a mask on. We're not, we're not going to dictate to that level of detail because we're expecting some, you know, them to follow some of the other rules. And so I don't know why there's a feeling that that needs, that one needs to be defined.
And it does say drinking, it's not just food, so it could be drinking.
Correct.
I, I think the only question is, is so the way that it's worded now, at least from the attorney's perspective, is as soon as you walk through the door, you're in an eating and drinking establishment. So as soon as you sit at the table, you should be able to remove your mask.
Correct.
Whether or not you have a drink in front of you immediately or not.
Well, it says in the process of eating or drinking.
Yeah.
Right. So being, what she is stating is being in a restaurant is, can be considered or deemed part of the process. So as soon as you enter, sit down at a table and receive your first water, you are in the process of eating and drinking. So-
Yep. Right.
What she is asking there is, do you want to further define that?
No, that was my point. I don't think it needs to be.
And then as it relates to number five. Services open-ended to the question that I think she's asking is, are there specific services that we would exempt out or not?
I think if we start to list, there's going to be something that we don't think of in either way.
Yeah, we run that risk with every code for sure.
I mean, I can think off the top of my head, obviously dental work would be one, you know, but there's others. And I just think this is okay the way it's stated.
Yep, I agree.
I know in Cedar Rapids, as soon as you walk through the establishment, you sit at your, your table and you can take your mask off. It has nothing to do about getting a glass of water in front of you. As soon as you got and sat down with your group, you're six feet apart from everybody, take the mask off.
Yes.
Then if you get up, go into the restroom, you put the mask back on.
That's my understanding.
It has nothing to do with a drink or anything like that. It's establishing your table.
Right, and the distance from all the people. Yep.
And the distance has been taken care of by-
The previous statements.
Well, not even us, but the state law board and Restaurant Association and all of that.
The governor's proclamation and food and beverage, which just sent out these letters saying that they were going to be much more stringent upon those rules.
The next one is about us processing the payments. I don't-
I would say no. That was prior to us having a full proof glass. So it is kind of comical, but it's not.
No, it's not, actually, in retrospect, not at all.
You know, I have seen people pay parking fines with pennies and be really vindictive about how they do things. And if we did not have the glass up there, then I would not want to process payments at City Hall.
Aside from like water bills, do we process any payments up here? Like, I get a speeding ticket out and send it here.
Police department, pardon tickets.
Pardon tickets we do? Okay, because that's, yeah, okay, that's helpful.
Wherever they're from.
So I don't have an issue with this, like I said, given the security measure that at City Hall. But had we not had the glass there, I would have said absolutely not.
Yeah.
The part of this will be determined by how they're going to want, how the city attorney will want this enforced and what type of ticket. Is it going to be a civil citation? Is it going to be misdemeanor offensive citation? There's different processes involved with that. Some of those will have court costs. Or is it handing out a pardon ticket, which we do locally? And then if it is failed to take care of from that standpoint, then it can be a petition to the court, which is, I think, is what this guideline is defined as.
The final line is the difference in opinions and this is the difference in opinions between attorneys. Did you have that language in there? Our attorneys are-
He's saying different.
Basically saying that's not how it's going to happen anyway, so you might as well just leave it off.
Well, everyone wants to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that was something that was different from the to be a point.
Chris, did you get the questions that you needed answered?
Yeah, so really there aren't, with the exception of the removal of 49.06, number three, there really aren't any verdict changes.
Well, 49.05 is a fine, number one.
Yes, unless you, out of those six choices.
Oh, right, right, okay, yeah, yeah. So we're good on those then?
Correct.
I guess I would be in agreement with Stephanie regarding, not making it so high that we're just poking there, but making it enough that with the education and with the communication that I would foresee us doing, the deterrence becomes a factor. At $10, it's not-
So keep in mind, kind of go back to my original comment with the citation style. Depending on what that is, a speeding ticket, for example, is a $40 fine with a 30% surcharge plus $60 court costs for a total fine of $130 from that standpoint. So when you, when you set a $10 fine, it may not, I mean, that's, you need to be cognizant that it may be a $10 fine or it may be a $75 fine.
So where are those?
Those are set by the state.
Okay, okay.
Is that based on, you know, whether it's a simple misdemeanor, what level and-
Those are all, those would be simple misdemeanors and it goes up from there. But again, kind of going back to, is this going to be a minit, a municipal fraction of civil citation or a traffic citation? You know, like we would handle a traffic citation if you're throwing it under that code. It's a matter of where we place it from that process.
And why is that not, I mean, we're obviously still determining that.
Should that be part of what's in here, those words of-
The code section, I mean, if you're passing an ordinance, it'll need to specify exactly what code section it's going under.
Okay, so one of the big points of this discussion has been ease slash risk of enforcement. Would you, just pure opinion, Doug, and I'm not, you know, again, sticking on the spot here, but is there, which of those options would you and your officers, would you think, be most comfortable in?
Personally, the civil citations are difficult for us because everything goes back to the city attorney. Lynn County generally does not accept civil citations, Cedar County does. So there's some differences there. I have no idea why. Some of those judges are transferable over, so. Something that the officers can handle directly, right then and there.
More akin to a speeding ticket.
The civil process could be, we see a violation, we petition the court for, we contact the city attorney with the notice. They send us back a summons, we have to go find the person again and-
Doug, I don't need to see it worth any more details. I have never seen it, have never seen it as a civil process.
Right.
You know what I mean? I just have never seen it that way and I don't know that anybody else had that intent either.
So if we do it that way and we model on a speeding ticket, then 40 bucks, all of a sudden it becomes 130. But it doesn't necessarily have the same, see, I had no idea that all of that went into a speeding ticket.
That's why.
I had no clue. Right, exactly, you know, but, and, you know, part of it is I don't speed all that often, but part of it is I just don't pay that much attention to it. So the 40 doesn't necessarily then accomplish the deterrent factor, I would think.
Well, you add everything else into it.
Right, and maybe that needs to be part of the-
I was going to say, does that need to be spelled out here by orders? We receive a fine of X plus-
Surcharge and court costs.
That we got, yes, just so they know it's plus more.
Well, I don't think our speeding tickets have that language, do they?
Well, all of our traffic code refers back to state code, which is directed under the traffic code for compendium violation, scheduled violations. Many of our, you can have city ordinances that will point back to that as well if you're running it under that offense. So the example of, if we had somebody for simple assault and we charged them under city code, that's a non-scheduled fine. They would have to go to court and appear in court and then get the fine assessed. They would still get the court costs and everything else. The fine would just be set by the judge. If you're setting a ordinance fine at a set amount, it's probably going to tie back into the portion where the city has the authority to enact this ordinance and make it a fine. There's specific codes that are related for city enforcement. And then it would bring in naturally the, the surcharge and court costs that go with that, is the way I would dissipate that. But again, that's the simplest process for everybody because the officer can deal with it in one setting.
Well, I would be in favor of that. And at the, what sounds nominal, $40 level, with the understanding that there's the other, you know, surcharge and court costs and that we communicate that so that deterrence. Because to me, I don't, I don't want to make any money off this. I don't want your guys to have to write tickets. That's not my purpose in this. I want people to see this, give business owners and the college and the schools and everybody else something to point to, to say, listen, this is what's happening. There's teeth behind it and you need to either follow the rules- and you need to either follow the rules or there's consequences for them. And hopefully that's enough, that either they leave, they put a mask on, they do something to do what we're all hoping they will do. So I would, my ideal situation is we write zero tickets, people, mask use goes up and everybody's safe. That would be my idea of this.
Here, you hear me?
That's fine.
Optimally, somebody's going to have to make a move.
I am, I'm not an expert in public health, but I've kind of listened to a balance of public health opinions that are out there. And the decision we made five, six weeks ago, whatever, at this table, my feeling at that time has not diminished in that intervening six weeks and so on. And I think that was a bold position take. I mean, obviously there were a lot of places and a lot of communities in the state that took that action. I think it shows a leadership role, it's been alluded to by, it's come out by a lot of the different people here, by taking, by taking charge of that situation. I mean, I can't control how often everybody washes their hands. I can't control how often people socially distance, but I can have some impact upon a visible method of trying to control the virus by wearing masks in public. So for that reason, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance that, if we've thoroughly discussed it here, ordinance nine dash, and if you got other answers that you need to your questions, Chris?
With the exception of fines.
I'd like to suggest fifty bucks. Fifty bucks is easy for them to remember. By the time it gets added to, it's going to be a hundred and twenty.
With that fifty dollars plus plus, whatever, make a motion to approve ordinance nine dash eight dash twenty twenty B, mandating face coverings during public health events in cities of Montford Municipal Code.
I will second.
Tom and Steph, any other comments?
Oh, hold on. One more question.
So the initial fine's fifty, but what about the increase? Does it stay at fifty?
I think if we're following speeding tickets, I don't get a bigger fine the next time around for doing ten over. Do I? I mean, no.
No, this is basically, it's not for multiple, it's if you don't pay with them.
Oh, if you, so what, I mean.
Well, they've got it increasing by fifty percent.
I would defer back to the city attorney when we want to go from there because there's a couple different processes. It depends how they put this in. If they fail to pay the fine, if it's a misdemeanor offense, then it can become.
Yeah, I mean, there's built-in consequences if I don't pay my speeding ticket.
Yeah, it's not a second sentence.
And if I don't pay it, then I don't show up in court on the day that's written on the thing. Something happens, and that's all triggered by some deep written code.
So if payment isn't paid, fifty dollars, and if payment isn't paid within thirty days, the fine will increase to seventy-five dollars?
No, I think we just ask the.
We just say.
Yeah, I think that's what the code takes care of. I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I got one more comment. So let's say this passes and over the next six weeks, like seven or eight people get fined and everything. And during that time, somebody, it's expedited to the Iowa Supreme Court, and Iowa Supreme Court says, hey, that's unconstitutional, I'm striking it down. Does that open this city up to lawsuits from them, seven or eight people who got fined?
It opens us to probably having to refund the fines.
But you violated their rights. I think it opens up a.
You're violating somebody's constitutional rights.
So they have to show how they were injured by that violation. So I don't, I'm not as concerned about, I'm not as concerned about that as I am if we were to, here's what I would say, if we collected any money from a fine, it would go into its online account and that money would not be expended on anything until this is run. Most likely, it would be a situation where if it went to that level, then all of the previous tickets, kind of like the traffic fines from the mobile units in Cedar Rapids, they went back and refunded X amount prior to a certain date. We would probably have to refund any fine that we collected to anybody if this were to be struck down. I'm not as concerned about somebody trying to file a class action lawsuit. They would have to show how they were harmed by this. Now, I mean.
Well, this is also why you show it to be a twenty of ten.
But it is, it is fairly difficult to do. I've not heard of a mask killing somebody. I mean, that would be the only thing that would open yourself up to a class act lawsuit like that, too. I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. I'm more concerned about the fact that, you know, whatever we would collect would just be set aside with the impression that if it were challenged or struck down, we would have to refund those dollars to people.
All right, Chris, you have everything you need? We have Tom and Steph.
Yes.
Do you have everything, Chris? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Clearly have Tom and Steph with the first and the second. Any other comments from anybody? Roll call please, Sue.
Herman? Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Rod Bush?
No.
Weasley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All right, good discussion. This is not easy for anybody. And I would advise the council, and this isn't meant to be a scare tactic by anyone, but when the mayor proclamation was passed, I received quite a few very nasty voicemails, two of which were quite threatening in nature. I did share with Chief and Chris. I wouldn't say it was life-threatening, but it was probably on the border of, so. Hopefully that doesn't happen after this. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, so to speak, because some individuals were not happy at all with the mayor proclamation.
Thank you, Doug.
I'm not sure if they were from Montford or not, but it was a little interesting hearing some of the voice messages, for sure, so.
I'm sorry that you had to do that.
I'm sorry. They are a little comical at the same time, but sad more than anything, but that's kind of the world we live in, so. Just kind of a heads up for the council. All right, anything else? All right, we will move on to resolutions for approval. Resolution nine dash eight dash twenty twenty A, requesting reimbursements for the Iowa COVID-19 government relief fund.
So I'm going to handle both of these at the same time because they're both related to COVID reimbursements, but I don't have all of the eligible expenses complete yet. But I think the resolution is adopted and have to be turned in by the fifteenth, so we're compiling all COVID-related expenses. I believe the FEMA reimbursements, it's only like thirty-three hundred dollars. So whatever expenses we show will be limited to that, and then the rest will then go to state. But some of the expenses we're trying to get reimbursement on are masks. We would probably spend twelve thousand dollars or so on masks, depending on when we order them, and then additional cleaning, things of that nature. So not a significant amount, but we are going to try and see reimbursement for both of those.
And that's what both twenty twenty A and B on here are?
Correct, one is for FEMA and one is for the state.
Ah, gotcha, well.
If the process is moving, I'll make a motion to approve resolution nine dash eight dash twenty twenty A, first, Eric.
I'll second.
Tom and Scott, any comments? Roll call please.
Rose?
Yes.
Rod Bush?
Yes.
Weasley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Okay, next item, resolution nine dash eight dash twenty twenty B, requesting reimbursement from the FEMA COVID-19 Public Assistance Grant Fund.
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll approve of resolution nine dash eight dash twenty twenty B.
I'll second that one as well. Deb and Scott, any comments? Roll call please.
Rod Bush?
Yes.
Weasley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right, next item, resolution nine dash eight dash twenty twenty C, approving a final plat of Stone Brook Eighth Division to the city of Montford. Chris, I'm pretty cut and dry, correct?
Yeah, nothing really to add. This is sixteenth court.
zoning, zoning voting in favor?
Yeah, so I thought it was interesting that conversation was more centered around the parks.
Yeah.
Which is always the case.
That has been a topic of conversation for a while.
I think about twenty years. Well, with that unanimous move at the planning and zoning level, I'll move approval of resolution nine dash eight dash twenty twenty C.
Scott and Tom, any comments? Roll call please.
Weasley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Rod Bush?
Yes.
All right, as I mentioned, item four is at this table, so we will move on to motions for approval. Item one, consideration of claims list. Anybody have any questions on that item?
I'll make motion to approve the most recent claims list as presented.
I'll second.
Tom and Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of downtown street closures for small business events, CDG. Joe, you're up, sir.
Okay, I'm smoking. So I think I gave you all this press release that we're putting together. I hope to get it out on Friday. And instead of one shop small Saturday, we'd normally do that the Saturday after Thanksgiving. We're suggesting we do three this year. The fourth Saturday in September, the fourth Saturday in October, and the fourth Saturday in November, that would be the normal one. And we are asking the businesses to offer sidewalk sales so people can shop outside. And we wanted to ask further, at least counsel, for the first one, that would be September twenty eighth, twenty sixth, if we could close down the block that starts at Valence and ends at K Apothecary, so that merchants and restaurants can move tables and merchandise further out into the street and we can all better social distance as we enjoy this. We're assuming that the October and the November shop small days will be too cold for this to happen. So if we could get permission for the first time, we could see how it works and kind of make an assessment and maybe go from there. The current press release says nothing about closing down the streets, and we did that on purpose because we wanted to wait and see what we said. But the thought is that if we offer, we close down the streets for the first one and it works out, we may come back and ask you if we can close the streets down for the others. Comments?
Have you had any conversations at all, Joe, with business owners?
I've talked to almost everybody, and for the most part, everybody is really supportive. You know, I went up and down the street and we did the outdoor dining, and everyone was really confused by it until they saw it. And then everyone was really supportive of this. So I think it's something that for next year, if we're all still wearing masks, which I hope not, but we probably will, that we're going to need to come up with some kind of program, and that's a CDG committee can put that together so we find a way to offer this option to more businesses on Main Street.
Well, I think the closure on September twenty sixth is a great idea, you know, that I've talked about this before, I love the idea. I think that the city has not been involved in having to do closing because we didn't have Heritage Days, for example. And I feel like it's a worthwhile activity, and it's also worth testing the waters and seeing how things turn out.
Very good. Do we need a thing?
Yep. I will make a motion to approve the downtown street closures as presented.
So just September twenty sixth?
Just for September twenty sixth.
That's all we're actually. I would go ahead and leave it open-ended because if the twenty sixth goes well, instead of having to vote on this each time, we're aware of the dates, the press release has the dates. If you choose not to close the streets down the second two because it didn't go well, that's fine, you don't have to, but if it doesn't go well, then.
Okay.
I think it all will be dependent on weather as well. So if it's freezing cold or there's a slow storm, nobody's going to want to put their stuff out when.
Which more to Chris's point, then it gives you more flexibility to make that determination.
That's correct.
Okay.
And for the Saturday, November twenty eighth, is that the one that we typically have with the riot activity?
That's correct. So we'll do, you know how we always do that shop, well, you've helped me with it before, that shop small booth. We'll do that three times. That'll be an outdoor booth, under a tent, I'll dress really warm, my volunteers are dressed warm, and we'll plan on offering that same sort of service.
More spread out.
Pardon me?
More spread out, would you say?
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I will go back to the original motion of approving, making a motion to approve the downtown street closures as presented.
I will second.
Scott and Steph, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Next item. Thanks, Joe.
Woohoo! Thank you.
Next item, discussion consideration of emergency cots.
So these next three items actually are kind of together, but they came out of the after-action conversation with staff. And I don't really need motions tonight, I'm just looking to see if there's support. So before I have staff or securing bids or seeking out significant amount of information on these three items, I just wanted to present them to you and get your take on it. So the emergency cots, in light of derachio, a lot of this came out of kind of worst-case scenario that we, I'll be honest with you, never thought we were going to be dealing with. We never thought that Johnson through Lynn County and all of the communities surrounding would be affected by the same storm. We've always kind of gone into emergency management with the impression that those resources would be available. So to give you an instance, Red Cross wasn't in Montford. Thankfully, I don't know that we really needed Red Cross, but they went to Cedar Rapids and Mary. That's where the population centers were. We requested cots to place here at City Hall as part of the shelter and didn't get a response for three or four days. Not necessarily because no one would have responded, but there was that much activity going on and no signals. So we did have one individual that didn't stay the night over here and was rather uncomfortable for them. We staff brought some things in. So having twenty cots stored out at the PD in case we needed to use them at some point in the future, I think would be prudent. It's not a huge number, but it would allow us to at least make some accommodations if we needed to. The generator at the LBC is something that I wish I would have pushed harder.
We talked about it.
I did present that to council and at the time, it was going to be acting a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we decided not to move forward with it. Again, by nobody's fault, other than we'd never foresee a situation like this. Now, people have asked me, well, why revisit it? Because had we had the ninety-plus degree temperatures we did the second week, immediately after derachio, we would have been in trouble. Because most people were without power on average five to six days. And we were running out of places to charge, not just phones, but charge breathing machines and so on and so forth. So we have this great building that's open with a small kitchenette.
And it is right in that corridor.
It showers. I mean, everything is in this facility. It's a huge expense, and I think the previous generator that we were looking at was not going to run the entire building. I do want to pursue a generator that would operate this building. It's going to be north of a couple hundred thousand dollars at least. But I wanted to at least get your thoughts on pursuing that because typically, cap has to put the numbers into it. We see electrical bids for the connection, so on and so forth. And then finally, the ice one is a little intriguing. So the fire department's, what we did learn out of this is the fire department's ice machine is too small. So what we're thinking about doing is moving the fire department's ice machine to the PD to service the PD and public works. Purchasing a small ice machine for the LBC and then allowing the fire department then to buy a bigger ice machine to really fill there. So they have this big chest freezer, they fill it with ice, it has to be bagged, and then there's a machine. to really fill there. So they have this big chest freezer. They fill it with ice. It has to be bagged. And then because the machine just stops when it gets full. So they try to keep up with that. And that freezer was full Monday. And by Wednesday, there was just a few bags at the very bottom and it was just one going out. So, um, those are, are just three items. Unless somebody here says, I don't like any one of those, I think I just wanted it to offer up an opportunity for you to speak before we went out and started the CDG and make some comment.
I think it's prudent. I do too, because we may never have an inland hurricane again, but we could have a tornado tomorrow.
Right.
And the weather patterns have become far more volatile. So better prepared than not prepared.
And I would add to it, um, based on something you said during those round of meetings, but there was somebody who showed up with a, a child and diapers and we couldn't, we didn't have a bath towel to, you know, it was pouring rain. You know, so, I mean, in addition to cots, I would look at those kinds of things, just having, and it, we don't, like, to your point, we don't need a hundred cots, but some, just some supply, some blankets, some, a couple of pillows, a couple of, you know, so.
And, and that would come with the, the cop purchase, but, um, but yes, I, I think there were some, some glaring holes. And our, again, I think our expectation is, um, and I stated this to Doug and the mayor earlier, is as a small community, I think there's always kind of an expectation that, when we have a disaster like that, cause you go to these conferences and you listen to people, is there's all of these entities that are going to come and inundate you. Normally, that's the case. When it affects an entire county the size of Lynn and then all the way down to Johnson County, then all of a sudden, those groups are in the higher, and rightfully so, they needed to be there. It didn't end up being problematic this time around. Received a few complaints, like I said, if I think it got any hotter, um, people would have started to struggle, especially, um, normally individuals. And we were running out of places, um, the homes, uh, some of the places where ambulance services taken to the hospital and stuff like that, but they were running out of space as well, obviously, so.
Anything else?
Probably wise to start building some of these into the budget, you know, start picking a few at a time. The generators will be a big swallow there, but, uh, we can start, cots and other things along, that'd be great.
The thing it is, like I said, this derachio, it probably will never happen again. So let's say that a tornado went through, affected a few communities. Can't you rent a generator that where they pull up there, hook up to the ci- hook up to the, to the facility and power it that way? Cause that way, you wouldn't have all these people wanting a generator. You, you could get a generator brought in and power that for a lot less than two hundred grand.
So, two things. Um, I guess I would disagree on the derachio because there's been derachios in Iowa. I just never heard it called that before, but we've, this is my second windstorm in my career. And I've only been doing this for twenty years. And then both windstorms have happened within the last ten years of each other. Two, no, more work would have to be done in order to make that building portable of-
Right, but not two hundred grand.
But, but it would not be two hundred thousand. The, the, the final thing is, is one of the other things that derachio did is try and find a generator.
Exactly, but you wouldn't, again, if it was a tornado, you wouldn't affect such a large area.
Although our communications were knocked out.
So, I guess.
That's a big, that's a big swallow there, two hundred grand.
My point, I guess my, that was my way of thinking before when I didn't push this farther and we could have used it here. So, um.
Well, we all said that. We all talked about it and we opted not to at the time. But I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, even my Chris and his team are just looking at the options. We're not saying that we're gonna buy it tonight, so.
No, um, we'll bring this back to you. You can make that decision.
You have the green light.
Maybe you should look at what it would cost to rent one for a period of time. So we have-
So normally, even in that occasion, you don't have to rent them. You just have to find them. So generators that large, again, if you're talking about setting the building up to run in its entirety, finding a generator that large, portable, isn't easy. I mean, they're just, they're not readily available.
And how are you gonna keep up fuel?
So we have a contract. We have a contract with Lynn County Co-op with all of our generators. So they actually, during the, the event, kept all of our generators full. But, you know, the other option is, we have City Hall. When we finish renovations, I hope not to have a stove in here anymore without a hood. Um, so this won't have cooking capabilities. I do not want, even though the PD will have a generator that we're putting in, I do not want a shelter in the middle of our emergency operations. That would be really challenging. Uh, so, again, it's just, you're, you're absolutely right. And I would say if I, if, if the money wasn't there, I probably would be on board with this, but if the money is there.
All right, I think you have a direction you need on this, right? Next item, discussion of consideration of pay application two for the nature park trail. Are you getting pretty, pretty cut and dry?
Yeah, the amount's seventy-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, trail's actually in, and dirt work and,
Yeah.
stuff that needs to happen is still ongoing, but.
You're already from the restroom.
Park trail is the most pretty that you could be.
Sunnier.
Yeah.
So entertain a motion for pay application two?
I'm going to approve pay application number two for the nature park trail, the amount of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Scott and Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of pay application, or I'm sorry, discussion of consideration of pay application thirteen for water and wastewater.
Um, this is basically starting the payments for the clarify work that you approved as a change order. So this is the amount of fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Make motion to approve pay application of fourteen on the twenty nineteen wastewater treatment plan in Cleveland.
I'll second. Thomas, go. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of police service contract with Lisbon.
Thank you, council. Um, I sent out a letter to everybody trying to detail some of the operations as we, um, tried to keep you apprised on Lisbon has approached, uh, City of Mount Vernon about combining police services. They're really looking at all options to see what, um, options they have available, uh, with their recent employment issues over there, um, and the resolutions they brought forward. So they, they approached us to see if there was interest in Mount Vernon, um, overriding the police services for Lisbon as well, and whatever that may look like. And so, um, this, Chris and I met with them briefly and basically, you know, we're, again, always looking to see what's in the best interest of both communities from that standpoint. And so what I tried to do in the letter that I, I sent out to you this week, um, was really detail kind of how I would envision that process going. Um, and what I think would be prudent, there's, there's, I've always been a strong opponent. If you go back and watch the council meetings from twenty sixteen, I was discussing it then. Um, I think there is some definite possibilities and definite benefits to both communities. Lisbon does not have twenty-four seven, three sixty-five police coverage. They have three full-time, they had three full-time police officers. Um, as I said, they're, they're without a police chief at this moment. They have one, um, police officer who's on light duty, most likely going to be in the next few weeks, um, on leave of absence, um, for the next eight to ten weeks from that standpoint as well. And then, which leaves them for one patrol officer, which again was kind of what led this discussion back in twenty sixteen as well. They were down to one officer again, um, from that standpoint. So the benefits from our side, like I said, I think there's some huge benefits from our aspects. We've lost officers because of schedule conflicts and scheduling issues and different things like that. You know, I believe, you know, in, you know, what we're, the way we operate and what we're doing, we're providing the best services we can with what we have, but we still have those challenges in front of us. And I think, um, having a staff of eight, um, would, would definitely benefit us in that aspect as well. It's gonna provide some stability. It's going to increase officer safety, putting a couple officers out. And so that's why I really tried to put some thought into it and put it on paper so you guys could, you know, different questions that I've been asked or, you know, you were probably considering from that standpoint, um, tried to summarize that for you. And so really, this is more of, you know, we need discussion from your standpoints, um, as council members, if, what your thoughts are and, and if this is something that council's wanting to move forward or entertain and discuss further.
Two quick points. I think collaboration is good. It's, I've, we obviously been down this road and had some deep discussion about it, uh, in pass, and for whatever reason, it didn't go forward there, but that, I, I would support, you know, try to combine and collaborate on that. Um, my, my, my only concern is, uh, uh, the length of contract. I'd make sure that we do this over a long enough period that it's not affecting a changeover in, uh, the city manager or our council, that, uh, it'd be worth your while to engage in going through all this processing, you know, changing logos, you know, you name it. There's a lot of work involved from the, from the startup. That the length of contract needs to be more than just a year.
I, I concur. I mean, and my, my number right off the top of my head is it's a five-year process.
Well, that's my minimum.
Um, I think it's going to be a two-year spin-up if we were to do that by the time we integrate and bring all of that in. It could, it could take a while. I mean, I think immediately we could make it happen, logistically and, and, you know, I, I can bring their people. We can build it into a schedule. We can start doing the service. But bringing all of, working down through all the details is going to take some time, no doubt, absolutely. So I completely support that.
As far as financing it goes, what we should probably do is base it off population. Would be the best way to finance it. That way, you know, if there's forty-five hundred here and there's two thousand there, that percentage-wise, I mean, how else would you do it?
Well, actually, I wouldn't pursue it that way, um, because I do not see this as a, a true combined service in which both city councils have the same control over this. This is still a police department governed by the City of Mount Vernon that, that the police chief would work with and advisory, um, board made up of, it's council members from each, but similar to like CDG, ultimately Doug's job, um, falls back to this city council. So it's still, to a certain extent, a twenty-eight E agreement. Uh, as far as what is required or what is, is needed from a per capita basis, there's, there's some factors in it that that would be a little bit challenging. Number one, both communities are still going to get charged dispatch fees from Lynn County. Those are based specifically on, well, it's supposed to be based upon population, but they're not going to combine that dispatch fee into one. It's still going to be based upon the two communities. I would not advise this council relinquishing our police department. This was told to them back in two thousand sixteen when I first got here, is, is we would still kind of maintain control as far as hiring and, and dealing with officers as far as, um, contracts, union negotiations, things like that. It's easier to manage from my perspective. I have no issue with the creation of, uh, MBL or whatever they come up with as far as a combined logo, um,
What's Tom's point? The twenty-eight E?
Correct.
Is infinitely easier to dissolve in five years if, if it isn't, you know, we don't just combine.
Yeah, there's two things. There'll be an initial period of time and then there will also be an out clause for both. And the out clause will have to be significant as well. By the end of a five-year period, you've established a significant amount of, um, dollars into equipment, things like that. So, um.
In person.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Eric, when your questions about financing the thing were about the rebranding and the logos and those kinds of spin-ups.
But right now, they have a police budget, so quite a lot should just transfer over to our.
Yeah, but then they'd say, well, we no longer have a,
Police chief.
To be fair, I mean. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta have some basis for it, or it's just, I mean, what are you gonna say? Well, you, two hundred thousand or something? It's better if you can do a, if it's thirty-seventy or thirty-two sixty-eight or whatever the case may be. I just don't understand. Yeah, you're not relinquishing. You just tell them, this will be your amount you're paying. I don't quite understand.
Cause you can do that without establishing a percentage as well.
You can, but it's, it's a har- a lot harder to justify rather than population. Population's population, there's no doubt about it.
Not through a twenty-eight E. We establish a dollar amount.
They're gonna look at what they pay now.
So, what's your?
A perfect example would be Lynn County. It's not based upon a twenty-eight. The, the Lynn County Sheriff's Department establishes a dollar amount for each one of those cities based upon the services they're getting. And that's what they pay. And then, um, the issue with population base is it doesn't change for ten years. There's a lot of factors that can change in between a, a twenty-eight E agreement, uh, cost, for instance, if we have a cost in, say, twenty-twenty-one, an unexpected cost. And depending on the elaborates of going based upon significant, unless you say all costs moving forward are split between these percentages, it's easier for me to manage just saying this is a flat dollar amount. And then there's an escalator in there, uh, for inflation.
So let, let me ask it a different way. So would this theoretical fee for service under the twenty-eight E cover all the spin-up costs to begin with? And the ongoing cost of the staff uniform to blah, blah, blah? So it would be all-inclusive in this wrapper cost?
One budget?
One, yeah.
And it has to be a number that obviously Chief and Chris are extremely confident in.
Absolutely, because I can see the beginning cost being staggeringly high as we go through and rebrand all the cards and put out new letterhead and yada, yada, yada. That one-time cost is big in the beginning. That's all I'm saying.
If you do everything, right, all at once.
Yeah.
So the expectation is we wouldn't do everything all at once. There would be specific things that would need to be done first. The startup cost in that, you know, the nice part is we don't necessarily have to go out and buy six new vehicles to have them. So there's, there are some things that we can do here that are, are plenty easy to, uh, relinquish some of those costs. But I would, would much rather just state, this is the fee, this is the number that I need in order for our budget to work. And then again, leaving it with an open escalator based upon inflation.
Cause ultimately, we've been down this road before. Um, Chief put in a lot of work at that time and then all of a sudden it was just null. So we make sure that we don't go through all this for begin, waste this time. It's not meant to be a cost-saving tool for Lisbon. I mean, if we can collaborate and it's a win-win for both communities, that's great. But ultimately, Chris and Chief have to sign off in terms of, yes, we are confident with this, bring it to.
I, I think everybody needs to be clear. It is going to be somewhat of a cost savings for Lisbon. To a certain extent, it will be.
Yeah, otherwise they wouldn't do it.
No, but it offers a lot of positives on our side as well. And it offers stability to our officers. Like I said, there's, there's some positives for us that come out of this. If Lisbon really wanted to do it the most inexpensive way possible, then the county, we would, we wouldn't compete with Lynn County. But you have to go along with Lynn County's rules, meaning they don't always have an officer in town that's within X amount of miles and there's things to that. So, this isn't going to be the cheapest option necessarily for the City of Lisbon, but it makes a ton of sense for both communities and has for a number of years to, to move forward with this. And I think both, both communities see that. It's just a- It's just a matter of getting from point A to point B.
And the document I shared is based on an eight-person department. If you recall, Lisbon's got three full-time slots, we have six full-time slots, which equates to nine, obviously, with, and we just recently approved the half, the part-time administrative person from that standpoint. So part of the change was leaving it at eight with where it's at from this point and seeing what our, seeing how that works and seeing what the needs are. I'm all for going to nine, but it's gonna take some time and figure out what the needs are from that standpoint. So like I said, I know we can use. And I think the, you know, knowing with an eight officer, I threw a schedule example at you guys as well, just so you could kind of visualize what that would look like. If, if we can have two officers out 95% of the time, that's a huge benefit for us that we don't always have, especially when we're shorthanded. So when somebody takes off, we don't have to bounce everybody around to cover that shift. We, you know, we have double coverages in there already.
So what other options are available to Lisbon where they could tomorrow say, ah, Doug, just kidding.
Yeah.
They could rehire.
Yeah.
And not where it is.
They can go back and go through the hiring process for a chief of police and then continue on from there.
Or they can contract with the sheriff department.
And that's what I, you know, I've, I've been very clear with Lisbon as well. This is, they have to decide what they want. They need to make sure their community is on board with this. I'm not going to go over there and sell this concept. It's, they approached us and that's the concept. This is how I see it working and I'm happy to support them in anything that we can do. And kind of, you know, if we need to go attend public hearing meetings, I'll be there. I have no problem with that. But it's, Lisbon needs to know what Lisbon wants. And, you know, I think they see the benefits of the 24/7 coverage that they would get from this partnership. And I think that's, you know, that's immeasurable when you're, when you're talking about you have emergency services out 24/7, 365. It's a huge service to your community.
That's funny, it happens quite frequently outside of the state of Iowa. There are maybe two or three in the state of Iowa itself. But once you get outside of that, it's insane how often this happens. Mostly because they tax differently and everybody looks to do this. But this makes a lot of sense. It really does for both communities to pursue from a service level to maintaining staff, to being able to, one of the items that was an issue previously, obviously, was building location. There were, we were housed here. We now have a facility that could easily take on what we're talking about doing here. So, yeah, I'm hopeful that this will take off and then we're able to make something actually work this time.
So obviously no motion is needed, it's just basically agreeing like from council to say.
Well, I think based on what Chief Shannon has put together, it's very clear to me that he has the communication skills and is more incapable of managing a good routine. So I'm confident in that.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic if we're able to get it to work.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, a few little reports. Jake, you're up, sir. Lisbon Mountain Ambulance.
Well, I just thought since the last time I was in front of you all was, I believe, January or February of 2019, that you might be curious as to what's going on with Lisbon Mountain Ambulance and the changes that have occurred. Last time I was in front of you all, I was asking for some money. The bright side is today, that's not why I'm here. So, but with that, we are getting closer to the delivery of the ambulance. It's actually scheduled to be the end of October. And we are very much so looking forward to it. So we've had some issues with one of our ambulances currently kind of being in and out of service due to some mechanical issues. So we're excited for a new truck to get here and be a little bit more reliable for us. But otherwise, I thought I'd give you a kind of an update as far as our activities during the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the duration of that. With COVID-19, our staff has been very diligent at responding to calls, making sure that we're continuing to be safe and taking care of ourselves. I've been working very closely with Lynn County Public Health as well as some resources from the state that I'm familiar with in previous occupations. And it's, it's really been a great asset to be able to pull from some of those people and kind of have an end to secure PPE and make sure that our crews are adequately protected, as well as to kind of have a trend and be able to talk to some experts about where this pandemic is going and where, what our rates are doing and what it means. So overall, our volume dropped by about 30% since the beginning of COVID-19. So January, February, we ran 77 and 68 calls respectively for the month. In March, we ran 34, which was the lowest we've been for three years. That comes from a little bit of fear from people going to the hospital, as well as people maybe monitoring their health a little bit closer and really deciding what is an emergency and do I really need to go to the ER or do I need an ambulance for that? We did have some cases that were transported. That was typically found out after the case, just because there was a breakdown between public health and some health privacy issues. But ultimately, that information did filter back to the responders who they knew to monitor for symptoms or any exposures. Again, we had the adequate PPE to make sure we were protected, so it was a little concern. You know, and looking forward, we're hoping, or hopeful, we're kind of getting rumblings that there may be a vaccine coming out in the next few months that will be distributed. Lisbon Mountain Ambulance service is a Lynn County point of dispersal, which means it'll be a point where we get the vaccine to distribute to other first responders. And that was kind of worked out with public health, actually pre-COVID, which is kind of nice and timely. Along with that, LMBAS has been participating in meetings with the city, Cornell and school districts as far as planning and talking about procedures and policies coming up for the school seasons as well as sport seasons. You know, as an active participant in public health, it's very important for us to be a part of it and to know what we may be responding into and to give some insight. So, and Chris has been in on a lot of those meetings as well as Doug and stakeholders throughout the school districts. As far as duration goes, in the 10 days following August 10th, our crew responded to 37 calls. So our full month's calls within 10 days. During that time, we staffed two paramedic crews. So we were able to operate out of both ambulances, which is, has been a great, or was a great thing during that time period because we're operating out of both the Mountain and fire station and Lisbon fire station due to structural damage at our station that's now kind of been addressed. So as far as the service overall, you know, we've been seeing a steady increase in call volume up until this year. This year, we're forecasted to actually be 5% down. However, the last two years that I've been here, we've increased our call volume by approximately 45%. And that corresponds to both transports and non-transports. We're consistently increasing our volume as our community grows, which is a good thing and something we expect to see. So along with that, we currently have 31 active volunteers for our service. When I first came here in 2018, there would be mornings I would show up to the ambulance station and kind of sit there and hope that I would get a driver or, you know, have to check in with the, the fire departments to make sure that they were responding so that I would have somebody to drive me to the hospital with the patient. Now, there's a lot of days where I just sit in the office and respond if they need a paramedic, which is kind of a good change, you know? It allows us to make sure that we can adequately staff both ambulances, as well as allows a lot of our members to get great experience and is a great thing for our community. We do have a paramedic on call the majority of the time. Every other Thursday night is kind of our issue right now. And that just falls into some various people's work schedules. So we are looked at as a service in the area that a lot of programs recruit from. Jones Regional and Anamosa knows us very well. They have, since I started, hired four of our volunteers into the part-time or full-time positions. The University of Iowa EMS LRC, sort of the Emergency Medical Services Learning Resource Center, recruits a lot of our EMTs to go into paramedic programs, as well as asks us to go down and talk to their members because they've identified us as a service that is doing great things and that truly values education and growing people. I get calls from services throughout Cedar County as well as Jones County and Johnson County asking input on different operational policies. So all of this stuff is really showing that the ambulance service that you have here in the Lisbon, Mountain community is, is a great thing and we're moving forward. In the future, we have a lot of good things planned, a lot of good growth. We're working towards 24/7 paramedic coverage. So when you call 911, you will have a paramedic as well as the ambulance show up. Obviously, working with volunteers, that's kind of a, a little bit of a dynamic, making sure that we have varied availability and really looking into everybody's schedules and accommodating that. One of the programs that we're going to be putting in place is actually something that the city of Mount Vernon is, is helping to do. You guys approved donating a retired police cruiser to our service and that will be utilized as a paramedic response vehicle. So we will not only have the volunteers and the ambulance show up, but we'll also have a paramedic in that vehicle that can show up, assess, get additional resources if needed or disregard resources. And really kind of make that determination, you know, does this patient need the highest level of care? Or can they go with some of our other volunteers while that paramedic stays back to respond to other calls or, or assist other agencies? So along with that, we've been working very closely with public health. During the duration, we were actually able to get information from public health regarding electricity-dependent patients or residents, which means we were able to go out and do welfare checks and assess people who maybe were dependent on machines for their oxygen, for their CPAP at night, or other, are their uses. And that's kind of where, you know, working with the city and the sheltering, we identified the city hall as a potential place for those people to go if they needed power. So we really are taking an active role in our community. We're trying to be out there as much as we can and we're trying to really give a good value to the community. So do you guys have any questions on anything that you've seen or any information you'd like?
I don't have any questions, but fantastic job, well done, Jake, you and your team. Because I know Chief and I have had this conversation for the last few years in terms of where the service was, pre-Jake, I'll say, and where it is now. Job well done, because obviously a lot of this speaks to your team, but also your leadership, so who knows?
You know, I've got a great team down there. I've got several volunteers that have really owned the education piece. They truly care about this community. And the last time we missed a 911 call was April 1st of 2019. And that was actually a second ambulance call. So our primary crew was already transporting and then you did a second unit. Unfortunately, at that time, we didn't have anybody in town. However, prior to that, you know, we were struggling just to get one truck out of the door at times. So it really has been a good change. It's something I'm really proud to see and really, we do have a good group of folks here. So.
Feel free to stop by as often as you need. I know you mentioned it's been quite a while, but please let us know if you.
Yeah, you know, I had a plan to be here in March or February, but something kind of came up around then.
So you mentioned the, we're taking delivery on the new ambulance expected towards the end of October. Is there any, and I just wrote a note, like a new ambulance christening? I don't know, is there something you guys do for that?
So pre-COVID, we were really hoping to have an open house, invite people out, grill out, and really show off not only the ambulance, but the equipment. Since COVID hit and we haven't been having in-person meetings, they've all been virtual, the crew has more or less turned our meeting room into kind of a crew room. So there's now recliners and Netflix and all that there where they hang out, which is great, you know? Most of the time during the day, we have a staff stationed. So they really kind of took a little bit of ownership and, but really just to show off our facilities, show people what we have and, you know, looking to the future, what our needs may be. Not only buildings, but equipment as technology changes and expectations change, so. But we will do something. I'm sure we will parade it around town and make sure that it's at various events or where we can get it out because truly this is a community bought ambulance and we're, we're very excited for the change. And I don't know if you all saw the presentation Johnson County did on, I believe it was KCRG a few months ago on their new ambulance and toting all the safety features. Well, if they think that ambulance is safe, then ours has to be the safest in the state, so.
Well, then what's one of them?
Yeah.
We tried to pass a law for them earlier.
So, yeah, we are, we're very excited about the changes and all the good things that have come, so.
Sure we, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And never hesitate to reach out if you have any questions on anything. So I love to talk to you and ask for public health or any of that, so.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, next item, Chris, duration wrap-up.
Just a couple of things real quick and more for the benefit kind of of the residents is, you know, we're moving into a new phase. Whereas we're asking residents to reach out to a lot of request for action tournaments, they have storm debris, so that we don't have trees trying to drive the community every day and look for debris piles. The other issue that we've had, and the percentage is small, but we've come across debris piles that it's quite clear that that's not storm debris. So again, the percentage has been very small, but I need to remind citizens that we're paying to chip all of this brush and I have to account for it to FEMA. So I'm asking that they not do that. We are going to continue with brush cleanup the normal way under the, the old rules. So if they would want to wait for that, that's, that's fine. I don't know if you received very many questions, but we, we did paint rather large pink marks on trees throughout the community. It is not a guarantee that the trees are coming out. They're trees that have been reviewed by staff and to staff's untrained eye or slightly trained eye, we believe that the trees are unsafe. We are going to have an arborist come and look at each one of those trees. My answer to the public when asked what then is if an arborist tells us that the tree is likely to die, now is the time to take it out. There's a liability now at this point for the city to leave it in place if it is damaged to the point where it's going to die. So as much as I love a lot of the big trees that receive some significant damage, I can't be conscious recommend to anybody sitting at this table to try and keep them in place. Those with an X are the ones that we've identified as trees that need to come out. Those with an L have hangers in them that we can't reach with our, our equipment.
From just driving around town, the ones that I've seen, I can't argue with.
Yeah, it's.
A fair job of that.
They're pretty, I mean, it's pretty significant damage.
Chris, are we confident some of those with hangers are, I, I know they're not secure, so to speak, but the wind that we've had the last few days, looks like there's been a couple of hangers and kind of worked through it now.
We had a couple. Nick and I were out on that morning. We actually passed each other as we were going out looking. We had one hanger that came down on a house that we were able to remove and the rest of them held. But the expectation over the course of the next couple of council meetings, number one is that you'll be reviewing bids at your 21st meeting for grinding of storm debris. And the second would be as soon as we receive proposals on the tree removal, you'll be voting on those individual trees. But I want to make sure an arborist has come through and reviewed each of those trees before we bring the list to you. I can tell you today I received our initial bill from M and K and some of the other individuals that work with the city during the debris cleanup. Very happy. Very happy with the cost. They were right in line with what Nick and I were kind of projecting would be, so. So, so far, storm debris is, is about the shy of $60,000 of expenses and we're expecting another $150,000 less worth of expenses to come out of tree removal and tub grining, so. Other than that, we started the process in the paperwork for FEMA as it relates to the deratio storm, so our, our hope is that we'll start to see some of that money return. For those individuals that are already inquiring about replacing trees, there is an approved tree list, approved species list. So please contact the city before you try to plant any trees in the right way themselves. Other than that, like I said, still very pleased. The one thing that I can say that Mount Vernon is fortunate is if you look at the tree canopy compared to Marion, Cedar Rapids and surrounding communities, our canopy is in much better shape. So after this initial fail-through, trying to remove trees that have been damaged, I don't think we're going to see a significant future impact, whereas a number of other communities are, are going to be awaiting to see on even trees that are still in that damage, so. All in all, very pleased with, with where we're at right now and those are just kind of things that have popped up since. We did have, like I said, we did have an after-action review by staff. I have the notes for that. I'm trying to formulate it into a report right now, so. Once that's done, that will be, I think the city council members, this is kind of a, another follow-up, but most of the information that will be in it has been shared with you at some point throughout the event, so.
Chris, is the drop-off file still open?
So technically, yes. It's not manned as, as frequently as we have. We don't have as many patrons coming, but yes, people can go and it will be available. That was the other thing. We've had a number of people reach out about firewood. Most of the grinders that we're dealing with do not grind the largest chunks of wood, so they'll be separated and then we will have waivers for people that do want to come in and do that, but it's not going to be open-ended. There'll be a period in time in which you can come do that and then the rest of it will be hauled over to the public works site. Yeah, other than that, anything else you think of that?
I, I would anticipate the public site being open until the 21st. Until the next council meeting.
The expectation is, is we have the, the apparent little bidder would like to start the 22nd if ordered, so. That's why I said it'll be open until then. And then from there, if they call ahead and make arrangements, they can likely go out to Bryant, but they'll need to, to contact me and make prior arrangements and just can't go and drop off.
And just so, it, it's clear, the, the regular pickup routine will recommence in September or will recommence in October?
Most likely October.
So fourth week brush pickup?
Correct. We'll have leaf pickup kind of in the weeks among that as, as well, I'm sure, but we're still seeing some fairly significant piles just, they kind of pop up randomly.
Especially after this one storm, I know in my neighborhood, there's been quite a few piles for.
Well, the time it took to get a tree guy to go up, you know, and it just, so.
But on a bright note, when we lost power this weekend for two hours, I think, my kids were ecstatic that it was not going to be an all-day thing. They were just happy that it was less than a day, so I'm like, well, we've got that going for us, are you?
I had mentioned something to Nick about providing, the city providing maybe a place to get dirt so that we could fill places where it got dug up and everything rather than city having to fix it, then they could go out, get some buckets, fix it and seed it themselves.
Yeah, and did we, did we get the bunkers yet?
We have, we have the, that's what I was going to add to, that after the 21st, we do have the bunkers available, so we're still working on trying to get the details out for opening up the Bryant drop site, but we do have all the bunkers in place out there. We are ready for drop-off as soon as we open that up.
I'm completely off topic, but the conflict that they've been making is terrible, so.
Doug, did you pick up the latest day of work?
I don't believe so. It's on schedule.
Anybody else have any other questions or?
So I did, I just happened to be perusing our boards, et cetera, that are established. We do have a tree division board. It needs to have a look see as to the composition of the members. Just wanted to make sure that we've been kind of keeping our eyes on the prize as people are beginning to think about repopulating their trees.
Yeah, actually the approved list came out of that tree board. They haven't met.
Forever.
Haven't met in the five years that I've been here, but on occasion, they, two of the members that are no longer here would stop in and just talk about it, so. Yes, especially when we pursue grants for tree replanting. So.
Because I do think uptown, some of the trees were damaged up there as well, so, you know, just to be mindful, it's a total community thing, not just residential thing.
And to clarify, is the approved tree list only trees to be planted in the boulevard or is it, if I wanted to replace the one in my backyard that I had, I have to go.
Only in the right way. I mean, we have suggestions for a tree not to plant, but you can still plant them.
Right, and on that note, the Indian Creek Nature Center has been a great resource in providing guidance on climate-appropriate trees and mix of species kinds of, and all the things that I don't get, but they know and they, you trust them, so. Indian Creek Nature Center is a good resource on that as well, correct?
Chris, and we did talk about this a little bit prior to the council meeting. I would like to see us do something in terms of whether it's a simple letter to Gary's M&amp;K for some of those organizations that went way above and beyond to help us out during the storm.
Yeah, so donated lunches to working with us directly with the storm. To local businesses that opened their doors and went flashlights looking for products that we could utilize during the storm event, so.
And I know there's, there's a lot of them and we always hate to miss that one, but if someone could do something to really say thank you to those organizations.
Yeah, and I think even inviting them to a council meeting in recognition of the kind of, you know, as far as I can turn way above and beyond in the midst of chaos.
All right, anybody else have any other questions? Or reports, standpoints, I don't have anything any for council committee?
I know we're two hours in, but I'll try to be succinct on census. As a Cornell representative, trying to track that once every 10 years situation so we don't run into what we ran through a decade ago with Michigan, the dorm. And started with John Harv, working my way through his office and eventually got Steve Stroh to see what's the census going to be from the Cornell aspect. And my goal was to try to get the Cornell numbers in the fall, which is higher than the spring numbers. But as I saw in the spring when I finished my census form, that there's a data record for colleges to take in the spring, so we can't take advantage of the number that's there fall semester, for the first couple of blocks, we ended up, ended up with a data record that's in the spring semester. But according to Steve, what he turned in was 878 on campus of that April data record was 71 off-campus. I guess the 71 other are counted away, but 949 is the number. Sage said 875, so we're in ballpark, I think, so.
That's, that's students on campus this year.
He, he had a spring number of 878 plus the 71 off-campus that they counted as part of the student, so hopefully that's what's going to reflect on the actual census, that it doesn't get down and so on, so. That is where that is at and hopefully we get the right number and hopefully it helps us grow your stack for the next 10 years.
And I'll try and stay quick as Tom did, but going back to our grinder folks not wanting to use the big or not having capabilities to do the large branch, not branches, but trunks and whatnot. I talked to Steve Meravitz of the Earth Council about whether or not they would be interested in organizing some sort of artistic commemoration, representation, I don't know what, what, where do you want to use for the deratio? Taking one of those trunks that are however they're doing, putting something together that we could, as a city, just have to say, look at this thing that we all kind of went through, right? And apparently locally, we have a chainsaw artist.
Ena?
Oh, Ena, yeah. So, if, if there's interest, I have no idea about cause or any of those sorts of things, but if, if there's interest, I'll pursue it further with, with Steve and we've got plenty of material. So we could screw up 17 times and we'd still have another one throughout, so. If there's interest, I will continue that conversation and come back with some more specifics.
Yeah, he actually has a Facebook page with some amazing.
He's got a really good site too, I'll send it out to folks, but it's a.
I can't think of anything nice that relates to deratio or 2020 in general.
He's, he's already done a few, one, one of which was a middle finger 2020.
We might have to, might have to tone that down. You can do a little one for the sun office.
Yeah, there you go.
Anybody else?
Steve Bois should write something about this too, right?
So the Housing Commission is going to be putting out their request for application for the inclusion grant again this year. That will be coming in the newsletter that will be issued through the fall. And then a question, where are we with the Community Center Advisory Council at this point in time?
As far as.
We had talked as a council that there would be a separate body that would.
We have. There's some question as to that have been presented by the attorney that we're trying to sift through as it relates to relinquishing control of a governing body to a separate five-wire state theory. So trying to wade through those waters to see if it's more of a kind of a friend or an offshoot of the Parker Wright Commission or it's an actual board in that capacity. It turning through some red flags in my idea, so I'm just kind of working through them a little bit.
Just wanted to make sure we hadn't talked about that for a while, so.
That and the pool committee, both kind of calling off.
Yeah, the pool committee ended, ended the.
So.
Because it was like all forms.
Let's see, that was January.
I know, it feels like it was so long.
The, the pool committee actually, I just haven't brought it to the council. They, they've made a recommendation on having the council consider and today, I did receive the information today from our goal-setting advisor. So that will be coming out. One of the things that came out of the, the pool meeting was basically hiring a firm to come in and actually tell us what's wrong with the outdoor pool and what it would cost to either fix or relocate that or here's the cost of an indoor pool and all the related costs with the city controlling the situation, controlling the narrative. Oftentimes when people do that, there's a headline in the paper and then you have firms coming and going, well, yeah, you should be able to build this and then everything goes perfect. Here's your revenue. I don't want that. I want, here's the stark reality of the numbers and what you may not be able to do. I think the, the committee itself, not that it doesn't trust the, the previous study that was done during the Community Center back before that I got here, but the reality is they want to have somebody come in and say, these are the numbers, this is what we would be looking at if we did and I think it's easier for them to take those numbers back to the community and to the people that they talk to first, so. That's the recommendation. I just haven't put it on the council agenda. But if this unit's got to go back from spring break, we just got to cycle it, so.
Well, so did the bypass signage, which every time I drive by, I think about it and you need to get on it eventually, but I hope you spend some of the time.
The city building committee's the same way.
We have, like I said, we have a lot of committees that have just been kind of hanging out there and truthfully, forgetting that, you know, it's already September and it seems like yesterday was just March and I was just getting back working out of an isolated office. It doesn't seem like it's been you know, that long.
On the other hand, it seems forever.
Yeah.
That it was normal.
Exactly.
Chris, anything that you want to highlight from your report?
Uh, no, then. Yeah, which almost is next dropped significantly, so. Which was expected. It's not a huge pool of money that we draw from, but turn that money over to CBD, so we are going to have to get rid of it for probably a couple of years. I told Joe, I'm not worried about it, it's just, you have to, you have to think outside the box a little bit.
All right, anything else from anyone? No further business, we need to stand and adjourn.